We're ready to go.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Be there every time.
Gibson?
Here.
Kapler?
Here.
Ormsby? Satterfield? Scaife?
Here.
Stoltenberg? Wenland?
Here. All right, we had minutes from the meeting of July 16th, 2025. Can I have a motion on those?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes of the July 16th meeting as submitted.
Second?
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting of July 16th, 2025, as submitted. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign, the minutes are approved. So, to my audience of two out there who took the cheap seats in the back, we are a recommending body appointed by the city council to review site plans, land use, and zoning matters. If you have input on a particular case, we would love to hear it. If you would go to the podium to my right and to your left and tell us your name and provide your input, we would love it at the point where I recognize the audience. So with that, Greg, we will begin.
Mr. Chairman, we have case 25-031. It is a replat. It is for a proposed plat of AAA Office Park 5th Edition. It's located east of AAA Court, south of Luther Knoll, and north of Palmer Hills Court. This is the location here. It has access from Middle Road. And this is somewhat of a diamond-type-shaped lot that was originally part of an office park. What is proposed is two lots which will make up the 5th Edition, and it is a replat of Lot 4, Office Park 2nd Edition. Mike Janasek of Martin &amp; Whitaker is a submitter. The intent is to split this parcel in two to provide for deta- or I should say, attached, single-family housing, two units. Future land use map designates areas community commercial throughout. There is some area of urban activity nearby to the northeast and further north. The zoning is R5. As you can see, Luther Knoll has the same zoning classification. There's also R5 to the south, and then you have C2 to the east, and then C1 throughout. Most of this area at one time was all C5. That was office transitional under the old zoning ordinance before the updating in 2017. Future land use, as it relates to the comprehensive plan, Goal 4, expanding housing choices and strengthening neighborhoods, you're having a different option provided here under R5. You can have single-family attached housing. This is the original plat right here showing Lot 4. Means of access coming up Middle Road, AAA Court here, Palmer Hills Court right here. There are two cul-de-sacs that impact this. When this is platted, it was platted under a different regimen when the setbacks were designated for a C5 office transitional district, and that has since changed. This lot right now is about 1.06 acres. The proposed plat shows the subdivision line basically right here, Lot 1 and Lot 2. The 10-foot-wide utility easements are still viable on this plat because there's a substantial area of right-of-way that is available also. Not everything is paved to the greatest extent that it could be, so there is other utility room here just outside that 10-foot area. The applicant also received, for Lot 2 and Lot 1, a Board of Adjustment ruling reducing the front yard setbacks to 11 and 13 feet. Lot 1 will contain .39 acres, and then Lot 2 will have .68 acres. Also, Lot 2 will have a stormwater detention area. The building that is designed is essentially a mirror image. These two are attached. You have approximately 295 square feet in both areas of encroachment that were approved by the Board of Adjustment. And as you can see, there are no sidewalks presently, but access for the back portion of this area will be in this area of the lot, Lot number 1. There'll be an easement permitting access to Lot 2. Vehicular traffic is pretty much low volume within this area, and this will add even less traffic than what one might normally see if you had R5 multifamily residential housing as you would find here at Luther Knoll. Utilities are present already. The water supply will come from the east side of the current lot, and then sanitary sewer is provided in the south. There is also other- there will be other accommodations throughout the utility easement structure for both lots to bring in gas, electrical, and then telecommunications. Pedestrian trail and access, essentially it will have a continuation of four-foot sidewalks that are seen throughout this subdivision. At this corner here, there will be provision made for an ADA ramp of truncated domes, and the four-foot sidewalks will shall be continued throughout this site on the south portion and east portion of the lot. There'll be 10 parking spaces provided on both sides of the structures. Four spaces are required, two for each of these individual single-family units. And there's also indoor parking as well being furnished. Stormwater detention will be taken care of here. It'll be taken in from other areas to the north and then detained in this detention basin and then released into the storm sewer system. Lot owners 1 and 2 shall be responsible for maintenance of the detention basin. There is no landscaping required, but as you can see in this photo that the owners, at their own prerogative, have the ability to provide and shall provide landscaping for the site. Staff interviewing the proposal recommends approval of the replat because of the goals and plan organization segment of the comprehensive plan being followed by expanding housing choices and strengthening neighborhoods. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg, appreciate it. Mark, anything since publication or presentation from your perspective?
No, just a clarification. What we have for you is a replat tonight. The applicant was gracious in providing extra drawings and things like that because of the unique situation. So we did a little bit of a site plan analysis for you, but really, it's a replat, and that's what you're voting on, just to be clear.
Yep, appreciate that. Questions and comments from the commission?
I have one.
Yeah.
Just from my own understanding, and maybe the replat answers this, but we just had a workshop a week ago talking about getting away from putting R1 or 2 houses in an area that's R5. How does this fit into that?
Yeah, so-
And not to be contrary, or not that I'm against this? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
Since we just had this conversation.
Welcome to the question, and you get extra credit for paying attention, so, no, appreciate that. I think what we're seeing here is multifamily development nearby, and then I'm going to use the term duplex style in a non-code-defined way, duplex-style development. So I would make a difference- differentiation between that and your R1, single-family, white picket fence, air quotes around white picket fence. And that's what we saw, staff. And we- and again, under our current code, so we're still living in the code we've got with whatever problems that may present us, this is an allowed use. It also is a similar use to the residential structures that are already there in the fact, both in the way it looks and that it's combined, shared-wall housing. Now, it just happens to be two, not one, or not four, as the other one might be. So, you know, that's the difference. It's not single-family, it's a duplex, to use a different term.
So making the decision now with the anticipated changes doesn't cause a problem?
No, I don't see any conformity issues going forward, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Others in the commission? Nope, anyone in the audience with regard to this? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval of case 25-031, subject to staff recommendations, final plat.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-031, final plat, replat. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. All right, we're ready when you are, Alyssa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is 25-033, a replat of the proposed FG80 Holdings 6th Edition.
Could you get the mic a little closer to you? Yep.
So the applicant is Kevin Kellner, doing business as Focus Real Estate, and the request is a replat, reconfig- configuring Lot 4 of FG80 Holdings 4th Edition and Lot B of FG80 Holdings 1st Edition. So currently, the Lot B of the 1st Edition, which is kind of on this eastern side, has been a designated outlaw and has not yet been developed on. And then Lot 4 of the 4th Edition on this west side has the Forest Grove Sports Complex, which is currently on the proposed Lot 2 of the 6th Edition. The future land use map designates most of this area as community commercial, and the current zoning is C3 general business. The proposed developments are consistent with the future land use designation and current zoning. The plat is pictured here, proposes five developable lots and one stormwater outlaw to the east. There are multiple access easements to navigate to the different lots. So we have Iron Tree Way here to the west, and then Ori Drive and Competition Drive and Forest Grove Drive to the south. All stormwater connections and utilities have been reviewed by staff and are deemed sufficient for construction. And then this is an overall site layout that was provided, showing the entire area plus some proposed developments to the south of the 6th Edition. And then, in the different colors here, there are accesses to Competition Drive and Forest Grove Drive, so the color coordination matches with the names of the streets. So this red, red line is Ori Drive. This green line is the proposed Sports Drive. The yellow line is Sports Court, which will be connected to the short-term rentals. And then Iron Tree Way is the blue, blue line. And then the purple line is an unnamed drive north of the sports complex. And then these red labels here of the kennel, the indoor storage, and the short-term rentals are site development plans that we'll be going over later tonight. And so given this evidence, staff recommends approval of case 25-033, which is the replat of FG80 Holdings 6th Edition with the following conditions: renaming Sports Court, kind of in that short-term rentals area, to a dissimilar name already utilized in the city of Bettendorf, and to name the private drive that connects Sports Court, Ori Drive, and Iron Tree Way, which is that purple street that was labeled kind of north of the sports complex. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Alyssa. Mark, anything from your perspective since presentation or publication?
Um, just, just let you know, on these next cases, we do have some landscape plans that are coming in literally as we speak. We haven't done the analysis on those, but we will do that before it goes to council. But we do have a totally complete package now with landscape plans.
So will we need to just note, part of the staff recommendation would be completion of the-
Yeah, we need to do our analysis.
Analysis.
I would prefer not to do it live tonight and, you know, make any notices, yeah.
So, so noted, yeah, good, all right. Questions and comments from the commission, please? I've got one or two. Can you go back to your very nicely color-coded street? Yeah, good. So, just for confirmation, are the colored areas, those are all private roads, right? And then the public road goes like around McDonald's and the other, that's public? I just want to make sure I'm clear in my head which are public road and which are private.
That's correct. Everything that's north and east of Competition Drive, so essentially everything within the complex, if you want to call it that.
Yep. Outside the roundabout.
Exactly. Once you get through the curve, everything is private internal there.
And so, from a fire and safety standpoint and everything, we're going to get fire trucks back there, and we know we've got plenty of radius and the hammerheads, and what do you do if you get a fire in a public storage? Do you have access keys and things like that? Do you have to come through a gate? What happens then?
Yes, sir. I mean, we usually have some type of NOx system.
Okay.
Allows us either, you know, the developers will give us card access, or, you know, we have some type of gated way we can get through those. But each one of those to do, I mean, their Devil's- his Devil's Gun facility today has that, where we can just utilize our cards to get in should we get-
Okay, great, thank you. I think that's the only ones I had. Other questions and comments?
I did have a question. The area to the west of the short-term rentals, is that already constructed?
This area here?
That area, right there.
That's an outlaw, an existing outlaw.
Okay.
That's a wet-
Detention.
That's stormwater detention.
Yeah.
That is there.
The water, the water's in that, right?
Correct, yep, that's a wet basin.
I saw aerial of that today at another meeting, okay.
Okay.
It's a long and winding road to get back there.
Sounds like it's sort of a country song, yeah, okay.
It's a Beatles song.
You indicated that the sore- or storm drains was adequate for this portion of the development. As this expanded, will it, does it have the current capacity to handle more? Or will you need to then add as more development comes along? Or is it some of both?
Actually, I will probably have their engineer answer that question. There, there are, there is room around all of those basins to expand if needed. When this was first developed, all three of the basins were sized for full build-out of the complex. Now, that assumed other uses at that time. But one of the uses was a large number of outdoor fields, and those were turf, so they do have quite a bit of runoff from them. So I'm guessing the answer from Zach is going to be that they're, they are sized for that.
Correct, they are. Zach Aggleston of IMAG, they are sized for the full development to be developed. We are utilizing both, the one next to the, I guess, in the far north there, we're using that lot, and we're using the one on the southeast. We do propose a new detention pond north of the storage units. That's, that is due to elevation issues, not because of lack of storage in the other ponds.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the commission? Anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll come back to the commission. And, you're on a roll.
I can do it.
Let's do it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move for approval of case number 25-033, the replat, reconfiguring Lot 4 of FG Holdings, FG80 Holdings 4th Edition and Lot B of FG80 Holdings 1st Edition. Subject to staff recommendations with the provision that-
Landscape.
Landscaping analysis will be completed before it goes to council.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. And that's really for the site development plans, but yes, that's in the record for sure.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we have time.
I'll second. All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-033 replat, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Unopposed? 25-033 is recommended for approval. Okay, next one, Alyssa.
So I've combined the next three cases into one PowerPoint just to make it easier to follow. So these are cases 25-035, 037, and 038, which are Lots 1, 4, and 5 in the FG80 Holdings 6th Edition. Again, the applicant is the same, Kevin Kellner, and the request is site development plans on three proposed lots. So this is kind of an aerial overview of the proposed parcels. Just for some context, this is the Forest Grove Sports Complex. And then for the three different site development plans, Lot 5, which is right here to the east of the sports complex, is the boarding kennel, proposed boarding kennel. And then Lot 4 is where the indoor storage is proposed. And then Lot 1 up here in the north is where the short-term rentals are proposed. The Board of Adjustment approved special use permits for both the indoor storage and the dog kennel in the C3 district at the past meeting on August 14th. Again, future land use is the same, community commercial, and the current zoning is C3 business, general business. And the proposed developments are consistent with both of these, future land use and the current zoning. So for case 25-035, which is the kennel, this was the site plan provided, which shows the building size, which is 9,960 square feet. And then just to the north of it is an outdoor, outdoor area that is enclosed by a six-foot length, six-feet-high fence. The access is provided via a private drive lane, which is this Sports Drive right here. There are 33 provided spaces, including two ADA spaces. And the stormwater detention is provided off-site to an existing pond in Lot A, which is to the south. This was the elevation drawing provided. This is kind of just the main entrance, and the proposed structure will have similar architectural elements as existing developments in this area. For 25-037, which is the indoor storage units, this includes 11 indoor storage buildings with a total of 111,600 square feet. And then each building is about 10,000 to 10,800 square feet, depending on the individual building. There are two vehicular accesses to the lot via private dry and lane, drive lanes. So Sports Drive will be here to the south, so the southern entrance. And then the northern entrance kind of is an unnamed lane north of the sports complex. So kind of for some context, this right here is the sports complex. And then this is the unnamed drive that would connect to the indoor storage area. There are four parking spaces shown in front of the rental office building, which is this westernmost building here, and that's all the parking that's provided. There is an existing detention pond to the south, kind of the same detention pond that the kennel will be using, and a new pond will be located to the north. Both of these ponds are located in Lot A. And as I mentioned, a six-foot high, or, sorry, there is a six-foot-high chain link fence surrounding the buildings for security. And this was the elevation drawing that was provided, and by the time of completion, there will be no more than 400 total units. And staff contends that the nature of this proposal does not negatively affect any existing and future developments. And then finally, case 25-038 are the short-term rentals. So there are eight buildings, which are 16 units, and a total of 23,500 square feet. And then each unit is between 1,075 and 1,600 square feet, square feet. There is one vehicular access that is shown via Iron Tree Way to the south here. The drive terminates at a hammerhead, allowing for turnaround for any vehicles that are using this drive. There are 64 off-street parking spaces that have been allocated all within the 38-by-24 driveways, allowing for four vehicles to be parked in front of each unit. Stormwater detention will be routed to an off-site existing pond to the west, which is right here. And a five-foot sidewalk is proposed on the east side of this drive that kind of like connects into the sports complex that has an existing path. And there are three proposed light poles on the west side of the drive, so kind of by the entrance, right by the middle, and then towards the end. This is the floor plan for the unit. So each unit will have four bedrooms, and then with their own en suite bathroom, and then a shared kitchen and living room space. So this is kind of the entrance to the unit. And then there's like a covered patio area to the back. This is the elevation drawings provided, and staff contends that the designs of the building would not be out of place in a commercial district nor negatively affect the developing area. And a landscape plan was provided for this specific case, and staff contends that the proposed landscape plan meets minimum code requirements. There are a total of 16 tree factors that are shown, which will also provide screening and buffering from the surrounding developments. Staff contends the proposed developments meet the site of, site development standards and code requirements, so staff recommends, recommends approval for the following cases. Case 25-035, which is the boarding kennel with the following condition: to provide a service walk connection to adjacent developments located west of the kennel, and to provide a landscape plan provided before city council review. For case 25-037, which is the indoor storage, similarly providing a compliant landscape plan before city council. And then case 25-038, which is the short-term rentals. Other questions?
Great, yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Mark, anything to add since publication and presentation?
No, just anticipating a question. Again, we're talking about why it looks like single-family. We're talking about lodging. We're talking about short-term rental, different than an R1 traditional use where it's an owned, occupied home by a single owner. This is a lodging use, this is a short-term rental use, different under our code than single-family homes.
Okay, appreciate it. Questions and comments from the commission on these three cases? I've got two. One, I don't have a dog and never have, but is six feet enough that a dog won't jump over it?
I would say if it isn't, you have the wrong dog.
Well, I'm worried about that wrong dog, but-
You won't have it much longer.
We're working on that, and there could be allowances made for eight feet, probably at a staff discretion level.
Okay.
Best practices, we want people to be safe, we want the dogs to be safe. None of us are experts on that, we're going to work with the developer.
All right, yep, good, good answer. And on the short-term rental street, will parking be allowed on that street?
It's not our street.
31 feet wide.
Since it is private, we would not necessarily have a safety of it-
That's right.
-because we're clear. Generally speaking, the reason we don't is because we would have winter maintenance issues. That's almost the entirety of the reason we wouldn't. Here, in, in reality, when you look at the site plan, there is space between the driveways. You're not going to get maybe but one, two cars tops. There is sufficient parking. I think we assumed that you could get four cars in each driveway when we measured them. I believe they were roughly-
39 by something, yeah.
Forty foot deep by, you know, 16 foot wide.
Okay.
Yeah, there would be no parking that definitely would not be allowed in the hammerhead. So we'd have to make sure of that.
So no garbage trucks going back, those kind of things? Picking up garbage, that'll be private?
Yes.
See him nodding back there, thank you.
No, no garages, no indoor parking, it's all outside.
Correct. Yeah, and I'm sure Kevin could talk about this more, but I, I think what we assumed at staff level was that if, if there was a need for additional parking, that it would be shared with the rest of the facility, similar to how all the parking lots are configured.
Cool.
Just out of curiosity, what does a code say for a short-term rental? What is the short-term max that somebody could stay in one of these? Is that defined by the city as a short-term rental?
Is it defined by the city? I don't think it's defined by the city. I think it might be defined in state code, I don't think it's defined in city code.
It's 30 days.
30 days.
Any other comments or questions on this case?
I have just a couple.
Yeah.
On the boarding kennel, we have 33 parking places. It's not going to be a need for that many, I wouldn't think, for that facility. Is that just extra parking to share with other? Is that what's required for that?
Haven't you seen the Subaru commercials with the dogs driving?
Commissioner, I believe the code minimum was 20, and that's based on our off-street parking standard, so the applicant's providing what they see fit for that development. It is a little isolated compared to some of the similar developments around there, so. Yeah, 33 is what they're providing for the size of the thing.
Those fence jumping contests bring in a lot of people too, though.
Need extra parking for that?
Maybe they keep a car there to drive away?
I said the Subaru commercials. Yeah, the dogs are driving all the time, so.
There you go. I also wondered about the indoor storage. So this will be staffed, there'll be an office there, there'll be someone working there?
There'll, there'll be an office, rental office, where probably during business hours. It is a gated, secure, indoor storage, so the gates will be located on each drive.
All right.
Similar, just similar to what the applicant has here off Devil's Glen. Those parking spaces then are provided for the office, and there is sanitary sewer at that office. The rest of the development has no sewer, does have water hydrants, all those things. That's based on the topography of the area.
The other question I had is about this indoor storage. So it's indoor. Is there anything that could prevent this from having additional outdoor storage? Because I don't think that's what we want, but-
Correct, and that's, so the spec- if you remember, there was an ordinance amendment allowing for indoor storage, which is actually called convenience storage as a zoning use in the C3 district. And the intent of that is to allow by special use, which was approved by the Board of Adjustment, for areas that don't have high development potential, that indoor storage use. This is not an out, outdoor storage is not, is an actual separate use under our permitted use table.
Okay, so it's not permitted at this location? That's, that's what I wanted to know. All right, good.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else? Okay out there? All right, back to the- All right, back to the commission.
Someone else's turn.
Let new guy go.
New guy, a little play on words there?
Little joke.
Yeah.
Not very fun.
Oh, Lynn's turn.
What is? Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case numbers.
Should we do each one? Do we need to do each one separately? We probably should, yep. Come on, get you to work, girl.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman, case number 25-035 SDP with the, as recommended by staff, with the following condition of service walk connection.
And landscape plans.
And landscape plan pending.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-035 SDP, subject to staff recommendations in the landscape addition. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, opposed? We are recommending for approval, case 25-035. Next case?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 25-037 SDP per staff recommendations and the pending landscape plan.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-037 SDP, subject to staff recommendations in the landscape addition. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Case 25-037 is recommended for approval. Last one?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of case number 25-038 SDP per staff recommendation and pending landscape plan.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-038 SDP, subject to staff recommendations in the landscape addition. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you. 25-038 is recommended for approval, which would take us to staff updates or commission update.
No zoning work tonight. We've got your notes from last, from last week, the 13th. Thank you very much, we appreciate, you know, the extra effort on your part.
It was a good discussion, yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
That's it?
I guess we're adjourned.